You guys all set to begin?
Yeah.
All right. It is officially six oh two, we're gonna call this meeting a session, we're gonna start with the pledge of allegiance, so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in a God, indivisible, liberty and. Thank you, may proceed. Uh, quick roll call vote? Or roll call, not a vote, we're not voting on a vote, on a roll call yet.
Roll call attendance.
Roll call attendance.
Mayor Allen.
I am present and scattered.
Trustee Alter.
I am here.
Trustee Decker.
Here.
Trustee O'Malley.
Here.
Trustee Sauer.
Here.
Trustee Shuddick.
Present.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Ryan, absent, also present, Attorney Elena Finn.
Okay, um, so just a quick, quick announcement, uh, as already on our agenda, uh, we're planning to have the organization meeting a regular May meeting in two weeks. Uh, we have a presentation, uh, or discussion from Phil from Phil's Automotive. Uh, this is the brainchild of, I would say, Dan talking with Phil and also Kevin really pushing, uh, among everybody to, to get this situation with for towing setup, so. I don't know if you wanna take it away, I just, um, put, uh, I scanned this and sent this to everybody, so you have this in your email if you want it, although he didn't send it to you, I'll do it right now. Um, so yeah, Phil, um, you know the situation, what do you wanna talk to, tell us about, and so we can get this situation squared wide?
Um, I've been in this for nineteen years, uh, I fly flat decks, do like duty towing, medium duty towing, tow for the city of Troy, state police sheriff department. Um, Dan had approached me about baked car, abandoned car, and you guys still don't last, doing a street cleaning, um, I had a problem with towing, also police department. Um, I told him, you know, response time would be pretty quick. I gave him a couple of towing contracts from the city of Troy and the state police, so he can kinda look through and put together something as far as rates for your guys' residency at home. The average rate with the, with the state police and the sheriff's department for an arrest or abandoned vehicle or something like that is about one eighty-five during the day. Some police departments two hundred bucks, some are at one forty-five, um, nights and weekends, they're like two, two and a quarter. Uh, stores sixty dollars a night outside after the first twenty-four hours. So even if they, even if we tow their vehicle on a Friday night, they have all day Saturday, they can redeem the vehicle on a Sunday, um, we do do twenty-four hours, seven days a week, nights holidays.
Um, you had, if you don't mind, Phil, you had mentioned that you probably, um, because of the time involved in the police department, if there's like a, a seizure or whatever, you know, they, where the cop, where they take the car, it's a part of an arrest. You could give us, uh, usually within about forty-five minutes.
Yeah, about a half hour, forty-five minutes, I give a tow contract, honestly. I, I know time is crucial to the police department, especially if they have a DWI, um, suspect or whatever on, on the side of the road. They have a certain amount of time to give them the breathalyzer on the side of the road and then back at the police department. So I know getting a truck there so that officer can get back and do his job is very crucial. Um, that's why my guys are very quick, their response time, like at four o'clock in the morning, they're pretty much dressed before I'm even off the phone with them. Um, wow, they, they've yet to not make it to a call. Like, I, I have a very good group of guys.
Great.
Sounds great.
Respond.
Thirty days, sixty days, the owner just doesn't show up and make.
If the owner doesn't respond, I get the car.
Yeah.
Um, so we, we tow their car, after five business days, according to New York State law, I have to send a certified letter to the last registered owner. So if you bought the car from him, but you didn't put it in your name yet, fortunately, he gets the letter, you might not know about it, he ignores it, after thirty days, I continue my lien process. Then I own the vehicle.
Is that irrespective of what state the car is registered in?
Yeah, no matter what state, I got to file in the New York State filings.
For five days?
Five business days, I have to send a certified letter, after ten, if I wanna continue with the, with the lien process, I have to send another letter, this is when the lien sale is gonna be, this is the amount owed, I'm leasing the vehicle. If you wanna make contact, come pay your bill and you still have to have your car up until the day of the lien sale.
Couple of questions, um, first of all, uh, so once you take the car and you, and they don't, and nobody comes to pick it up? Um, and you start sending all, it's, it's out of our hands, it's all you?
All liability, once I, once I accept liability, it's all by my scene, liability is all on me.
Okay, so it never, the car never has to come back to us?
Nope, not unless, if the police department says, we want this car for evidence, we're gonna hold it for evidence, um, bring it to our station, when we're done with it, we'll release it to you, I come pick it up.
Okay.
Um, it's done. Or if the police department calls and says, or tells my guy on the side of the road, this car was left here, we know it was involved in DWI or something like that, put a hold on it till we contact you. Nobody can release that car unless I either hear from the police officer, chief, or the mayor to release that car.
Okay.
Um, but all, all liability becomes my, my responsibility.
And if it doesn't have any plates on it or anything, you can figure out, still figure out who owned it?
Yep, I go to, like you said, I go to the last registered owner that I know it belonged to.
Okay.
So whether it was some guy in Texas or California, that's who's getting the last, the, the letter by New York State law.
Okay. Cool.
Um, and so, as a part of an agreement also, the village could be credited a certain amount per tow. Uh, and then we could basically hold, um, either some of that brought back to the village or some of it held in the event that we, um. Inappropriately tow a car, for example, I think when I was talking to you, we had mentioned that somebody calls up and says, hey, you never put the signs up on my street, like in, oh, you know.
They can test it, yeah.
Right. Yeah, we, you're right, we did, so.
What I, what I do with the city of Troy, I pay them back for every police tow I, I tow, parking, DWI, a registered vehicle, whether a car gets picked up or not. At the end of the month, I, I have a whole list, I fax it over to the, the city clerk, she matches it to her list, if the police department turns in, or, I don't know, if you have a public works guy, they'll go down with the street cleaner. Um, so she'll match her list, compare to my list, and then send me a bill every month. I pay the bill, if this street, somebody like down in Troy, sometimes the kids will take the signs down, tow their car, the sign was up, and then they rip it down. They'll go to the mayor, the mayor's office will reimburse or tell them, they can go get their car, they'll send me a letter to release the car, no charge, and the city will give me a twenty-five dollar credit. Compared to me paying them twenty-five dollars for a car. If all, so.
Yeah.
If I was to, if something is towed inappropriately, then the city will just take and give me a twenty-five dollar credit on my bill.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's a way for the city to make a couple dollars off towing as well. Um, I don't have a problem putting back.
Okay, and so, so if somebody comes along and they say, oh my god, my car is gone, how do I know where it is, how do they know where it is? You've contacted them, or do we make an announcement, this is where your car is if you can't find it? How does that work?
The, the city of Troy puts it on their website that, you know, the vehicle was towed by this company, this company.
Okay.
And I know where to reach you.
Right.
Yep, okay.
Out here, if somebody comes out of their house and they see their car, they're most likely gonna call the police department.
Right.
They do that down in Troy too, they'll call nine-one-one, say my car is gone, nine-one-one dispatch at the county will tell them to call Phil's Automotive, they have your vehicle.
Okay.
Or a whole box, where the two that towed for Troy. So, if somebody answers, that the police department, if it goes to the county, and they tell them the address, they'll, they'll most likely know.
Okay, okay, cool.
So in that nine-one-one dispatch case, when dispatch reaches out to our jurisdiction and say, hey, this person's caught by a stolen car, the officer would simply report back that vehicle was towed, send them to you, and then dispatch?
Right. Majority of the police departments, I don't know how your guys feel down here, but they'll have a tow log book, or an arrest record book, that this person gets arrested for DWI, car towed by Phil's Auto. So it'll be in their log book, that's who towed the vehicle.
Okay.
When the person was arrested, or if an officer writes a ticket on the car that's parked on the side of Cumberland Farms and no parking area, it'll be attached to that with the tow sheet, like I said, then. Um, Phil's Auto, and the police department will know who I towed it.
Okay.
And that's a triple kit form, right, so, uh, like you're gonna trip click, so three?
Yeah, the three-part form, where the officer will fill out, it's, it's basically like an inventory sheet, um, if there's any damage on the car. The, the registered owner's name, sometimes Troy puts it on, sometimes they don't, but they'll put the year, make, model, one copy goes to the police department, my guys get a copy, and then the city hall gives a copy for the clerk. That's how she matches up her pile of toes to what I have.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Denise, and how's the work?
And, and you, and.
I could, I could provide that to the city, or to the village if, if need be, I don't know what they use now, or wherever, but.
And then, this is, uh, an insurance, or like a general liability insurance, naming the village, whose falls as a co-insure, correct?
Correct.
At the very bottom, Rob, in the bottom left corner, it was, naming us as a co-insured.
Can you guys see that over there?
Yes, so that actually does not make the village a co-insured, all that means is that the village is holding a piece of paper.
So what, what would we need to do?
It'd have to be listed as an additional insured, which is different than a certificate holder.
Is that the difference?
It would be, if anything, it would be in the box right above the certificate holder.
It should say you have insurance.
Right here?
There, yeah, that's usually where it's listed.
Yeah, this just says, yeah.
So you're insured, did, did the other municipalities you work with, did they have their own insurance for this, or?
No, it's all insurance, and that's all I've given them, so, I mean, I can have my agent put it up in the other box, but that's where the state police, the sheriff's department, the city of Troy all have it listed.
It's up to you guys, I just, I just know that for a fact, I, I deal with insurance quite frequently.
Uh, this is the first time it's about my business, I mean, I, I can't have that change.
So is. So.
But in both places, then we go.
Is the situation, are there supposed to be a, a shared liability?
No, they just wanna make sure that I had insurance and proof of insurance, basically.
Okay.
Yeah, that's proof, that's, that's totally proof that he's insured, it just doesn't mean that his insurance is covering us if we get sued.
Yes. Right, okay.
Cause they can sue anybody, so it's, it's happened.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, but all, all liability would be drawn up, like in the, in the Troy contract, I think it says in there, and the state police all have liability on, on a.
So we don't need to change anything, we're just clarifying.
Yeah, it's for that, sure, on the insurance.
I mean, I haven't seen the contract, so I'm happy to take a look after.
I don't have it, I don't have the contract, I do have the RFP, and it just says like, commercial general liability insurance for a million dollars per occurrence, also listing the city of Troy's additional insured, you're gonna be additional insured. So it, maybe just an alteration to that, instead of saying sort of should be a holder, additional insured.
Just a number.
Yeah, I can do that, that's what I'm about.
Okay, would that change what we do for our normal insurance?
Not us.
No.
I think this is.
Since there's sometimes more money, yes, do additional insurance.
Well, it seems easy enough.
Sometimes, sometimes not, it depends, I've seen it both ways, it really depends on, I think, what the activity is.
Yeah, mine's running pause, you're so high, it was, I'm not even on it, at this point.
I.
Is, so you, you have an RFP?
I think. Yeah, this is an RFP, I.
When did Troy do this?
I don't know.
I can find out.
I think it was twenty-one, I think it's on, in the RFP.
I'm just wondering if you can piggyback off of it.
Um, I think it's probably very similar to when we loan out something in the village for a wedding or whatever, and they, they issue a certificate with us as, as additional insured or whatever.
Okay, okay.
I have to do it at work, and we have a policy.
And the reality of the situation is if you don't know what you're looking for, a lot of people are like, yeah, that, that's great, but, you know, unless you deal with it regularly, you don't necessarily know that there's a difference. But I'm wondering if they did this in twenty-twenty-one, if we could just piggyback off of it potentially, instead of having to do any more RFPs?
Yeah, I don't feel like, I mean, I don't think we need to do an RFP, I think we, I, I, it sounds like, I mean, are we all in on this? It sounds to me like, I'm very much so.
Well, yeah, and, and candidly, we've attempted to find other towers, it's not like there's people beating our door down to, to tow our cars.
Yeah.
We have, yeah, good point.
You know, I don't, I don't think we need, and what's, I don't think we, I don't think we need.
Bingo.
Does the municipality set the rates typically, or do you set the rates?
Um, the state police just set rates because heavy tow companies are going out charging five thousand dollars to roll out the door, so yeah.
We have that issue in this unit too, is we have a, a few different tow companies, but they charge different rates.
Okay.
So, you know, depending on who gets towed on what day, they might be paying one eighty, or they might be paying like four hundred.
Yeah.
So to keep it consistent.
Yeah, state police just went through it.
Some places, some of the larger places do RFPs.
Okay.
Yeah, and a lot of guys stopped towing for the state police, I know Barbara referred here, they stopped towing, K O Z shut down, they stopped towing for the state police.
Um, the city of Troy sets the rates, so me and Mons are on the same page, whether Mons towed a car, I towed a car. Okay.
Before the state police had that rates, it would be years and move on in our area.
Mm-hmm.
We all got together and came up with the same, that way, if the car was towed over here, we towed it.
Okay.
That's not happening, four hundred dollars and two hundred dollars, we all stayed the same, our storage rates were all the same, so.
Okay.
I don't think there's anybody left in this zone that's towing cars anymore, is there? Maybe Marty's performance? Marty Wolfman?
There's nobody for the state police, I go up east and they hang it, like, right to the Washington County line.
Wow. So Lena, um, we're all in on this, are we, I, I, I think we wanna work to get an agreement in place.
Yeah.
Uh, to ratify in two weeks.
Yeah.
Do we need to do any formal motion, or just, we'll work on putting this together and have it ready for the next meeting?
Yeah, just sort of grab, putting it together and then vote on that next meeting.
Brilliant, all right, do you guys have any more questions?
Thank you.
Sounds great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming out, and I do have some nice questions, we're very, very, very glad for it.
Can't wait to get you to work.
Yes, I'm up.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, I'm up.
Are you guys starting a street cleaning still, or?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
They are starting, um, next week. A little street cleaning.
I don't, we, we have street sweeping signs though.
I think what's gonna happen is, we have some, I'm sorry, you go.
Well, like. No, go ahead.
Uh, we have some repeat offenders, people who leave their vehicles that are in various shapes of not, um.
That's, that's a ray.
Uh, very shapes of disarray, we'll call it, in some of our parking lots, and, um, yeah.
Yeah.
Unravelled. Unravelled your studio.
So, those will be kinda the first things we call and, and get towed, and I think once word spreads on that, it'll be, oh, and then it'll just be, street cleaning, which we have to check signs and laws to make sure we have the authority to do that. But when winter comes and people don't move their vehicles for snow emergencies, which we do have signs, that's another spot where we'll.
Yeah, that's our.
Plus, once we get our parking study done, if we do the parking study.
Yeah.
Troy uses the paper signs, they put one on one corner, or the middle block, and at the end of block, they'll park in seven to three on Monday. And they have to post twenty-four hours before they do that street, I don't know what your guys' code is.
Make it up all year, right?
Interesting.
All right, oh, yeah.
The snow, the snow signs are.
We have snow emergency signs up all year, it's always up.
Even numbered.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're at even.
And they call it street maintenance.
Even on.
I don't know, according to your city code ordinance, um, what you gotta define for street maintenance and having to have it posted before work can be done on that road.
Okay.
We have just no emergency signs that are set, even numbered houses, I can't, I can't remember exactly.
And. And snow emergency ties to what's on books.
Yeah, they're all, they're there all year.
Well, that's true.
They start next week.
Street sweep, but I have no idea.
They do start next week.
Yeah.
And they're running through the end of the month.
So they're prob, well, we'll see if we have a, have things ready in time to do the, start with street sweeping, but it, it, yeah, that would, that would probably be the early things right out of the gate.
And we, and we should let the community know, cause they're not used to that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we can, we can do that on the paper, Facebook page, go for it.
Okay.
For street sweeping, even on days of the week, um, towards.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think.
And they message me and they say.
Okay.
I create, I don't, police just go around at night before on the loudspeaker, say, street cleaning tomorrow morning, yeah, yeah, well, your car will be towed, that they were going down the streets, I don't know how many.
There was, there was loudspeaker here at times, at times ago, yeah.
We, we used to do that, yeah, yeah, we used to do that.
Then you have people calling, say, well, I can't understand that.
What we should do is, we should take the ice cream truck jingle and add those messages in instead.
What are, what are they saying to me?
Anyway, thank you very much for coming out, appreciate, um, what's the best way to get in touch with you?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Phone calls, or emails, or anything like that, as we work on getting this set, set and ready?
Uh, I'll give you the shop number, which is always answered twenty-four seven, five one eight, two seven four, three seven five zero.
Go. Yep. Three seven five zero?
And then my cell phone number is five one eight, eight five seven, zero nine five five.
Mm-hmm. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you. Man, thank you.
Thank you.
Man, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you very much, really.
One problem, Josh.
Yep.
One problem, so that's.
And Phil, that's Denise, our treasurer, he maybe ought to be working.
I mean, I don't know why you went up here.
All right.
I have them contracts for me when you're done putting together whatever.
Oh, you, you need these back, you know?
I just keep on file.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll get them back to you.
Whenever you're done.
Okay, I'll, I'll get them back, I'll, I'll try them off.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, so, let's.
Wait, I just wanna say one thing first.
Yeah. Sure, sure.
Hallelujah.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, uh, and.
No.
All right.
And, uh, thank you guys for, for pushing this issue, for, for doing the legwork to make connections, and I'm very excited, so, good, 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 all right.
Yes, for, yep.
We have all the budget, things we have to talk through, we have done a lot of discussion, um, through email, which has been fantastic, so thank you guys for everything involved in that. Um, just, and I, I'm gonna try to repeat, or, or speak things out as loudly as I can, you guys have seen this?
Right, can I, can I just ask, what, ju- just real quick, so towing, do you guys like the idea of the twenty-five dollars per tow, um, credit to the village?
Sure, sure. I don't see why not.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious what everybody's thought on that was, you know.
Yeah, me as well.
I was a little bit confused on the credit to the village thing, as it, as it works with everything else.
Every tow he does, we get twenty-five dollars credit, so say they do ten toes in a month, they cut a check of two hundred and fifty dollars to the village.
Okay.
That'll be, um, reconciled with, with Denise, so, so she has her ten triple kits, right? He calls up, says, yeah, yeah, ten of them, yeah, that's what I get, okay, cuts a check for two hundred and fifty bucks. We accidentally tow, um, Doug's cannabis here, and, uh, he said, hey, the sign wasn't out there, so, oh, you're right, we made a mistake. We take, he gives him the car back, no charge, but takes twenty-five dollars, takes one credit off of what the village is owed.
Okay. Okay, okay.
That works.
Yeah, that makes sense, so that's in sense built into his fee structure, if he's charging two hundred, twenty-five, that's, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry. You probably, yeah, you probably are.
You can tell my car.
So, um, all right, so we've talked through, and, and I have, uh, highlighted and sent out to you guys the project, the budget figures that we talked through changing from the original tentative budget that was out online. Um, I, I wish I had a bigger screen in here, so I'm sorry, if you guys wanna move over closer, that's totally fine, and I've gone through Denise, and I've yellowed in anything that we've made a change to, and, and explained why. Uh, now it's just a matter of any other changes we want to do. So, first thing, we have discussed the minimum usage, uh, um, as, uh, for the water accounts, this would be setting up a, um, minimum usage of five thousand gallons. Um, and the way we've talked through this, um, let me just say here, um, the way we, we talked through the, the, the software is, if someone was charged, if someone used twenty-five hundred gallons in a billing cycle, a four-month billing cycle, it would show up on the bill as they used that much, but they would be charged for five thousand gallons usage. Um, and we've talked through how many accounts this would affect and the difference in revenue, we talked through some various possibilities of also water rates, and it sounds like we have agreed as a board on creating the five thousand minimum, so any account that has access to turn on the water, even if they have it turned off, would, would qualify for, for the five thousand minimum, uh, gallon charge. And we have also talked about a water rate increase, uh, simply because we have been operating in the red for so long, uh, on water, and we just have to join where all, all the expenses are in, in the reality of it. So, what I have done with Elena is prepared a resolution that includes setting up the minimum water usage, uh, five thousand gallons, and setting up a five cent increase in the base rate. Uh, which would bring us to, from five oh nine is the base rate to five fourteen, that five dollars and fourteen cents would be applied to all of the standard multipliers across all of the different budget lines, as we have done in the past. Uh, so, I just wanna throw that out there and give you guys a chance to say yes, no, whatever your thoughts are on this, we talked about a bunch of different things, Bobby.
Uh, can I just say that I, my proposal, just how I think? I kinda got this three-year plan idea, where, what did I say, around three percent?
Three, then two, then one.
Two percent, one percent, and at the end of three years, we're still only at five dollars and forty cents.
Okay.
But, I don't see fifteen, I mean, my bill, for example, would go up a dollar sixty-five at the three percent. Now, Doug had brought up a good point about, you know, say you got restaurants, you didn't wanna see too big of an increase, I don't see it as a big increase. So to me, that three-year plan kinda helps us get back even money, I think a one percent doesn't even, that's not even cost of business to me.
The one percent rate is the five cent increase, and the three percent, the fifteen cent base rate, go from five oh nine to five fourteen.
Five cents, yeah, three percent, fifteen. And I mean, Denise.
But you're also talking that, that our increase in our budget as well, so it's not just this increase, it's also the budget increase of, what is it, two point eight five percent?
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't, I, my, you know, just my focus is, I, I wanna even out with the cost of business, I mean, I think it costs more to run the water department than five cents more, I think we can back that up. But, that's just my idea, is a three-year plan to get us, I call it on top, but to get us in the green. Um, I ran it through Denise, I, I think it works, I don't see fifteen cents and then, whatever it is, seven, at the end of three years, it's five dollars and forty.
Kevin, anything you wanna say something like that?
But I understand everyone else's idea.
Did you wanna say something, Kevin?
No, I, you know, cause I think I said in the email, it's a pretty tough time for people, you, you go to the grocery store and you spend a hundred bucks and you walk out with two little bags.
No, I hear ya, I just think that we can run in the red forever, so my point, my idea, my way of thinking is, let's get out of there.
I, yeah.
You got it eventually.
I, I.
You'd hate to have to go up eight percent in five year, in three years, so that, that was, that's the way I was thinking.
Deb? Deb, and then Dan, Deb?
Okay, I just, it's a dumb numbers question, so if we're talking about five cents or fifteen cents, that's per?
Per, per one thousand gallons of usage.
Thousand gallons.
So, my, say my bill is three hundred dollars a month, how much more is that on my three hundred dollars?
Let's see, let's see.
That, that's a, a better number for a.
How many, how many?
How many gallons do you get, do you use?
Probably twice.
Say you use ten thousand, I use eleven, but say you use ten thousand, right now you're paying fifty dollars ninety cents, I think it'd, now you'd be paying fifty, mine's going, I have eleven thousand, it goes up a dollar sixty-five, so yours would go up a dollar fifty if you use ten thousand gallons.
To the whole three-month period?
Yeah.
A dollar fifteen, a little period, four months?
Four month period, four month.
Four month, it'd go up a dollar.
Okay, now, okay, putting it in the, in perspective of what I actually pay, instead of broken down, helps me understand, that's gonna help, a whole lot of people understand.
Sure.
Mine would go up a dollar sixty-five, our biggest problem is our bond payment, we didn't have that, no one would, I mean, we'd be fine.
But we do, so.
But right now, people think we're really high, and I got a spreadsheet for the state, we're not.
Yeah.
We're not at all.
See, that's the thing, I'm just gonna, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, I just wanna interrupt, when I talk about the PR or the communications piece, this is the kinda information we have to put out there.
Yep.
That's, that's that piece I wrote about as one of the committees.
Yep.
Just so people really understand.
Yeah, it's tricky.
All that, all of this information.
You know, three percent is only fifteen cents, you know, so, like I said, if you're used ten thousand gallons, you go up a dollar fifty.
Yeah, but. Fifteen cents times what? Right, that's, that's the number that people I think are gonna need to know.
With the average homeowner, fi- of one percent, every, so it's fifteen cents a month.
No.
No, no, it's every four months, it's for a bill.
No, no, every.
Yeah, no, I know, sixty cents every month.
Oh, break that down.
Fifteen cents.
No.
No, one percent?
I use, for, I use, if we go up three percent, okay?
Yep.
I use, let's say I use.
No, I'm saying it one percent.
One percent's less, you only go up five cents per thousand gallons.
Right, which comes out to be about sixty cents.
So if you do ten thousand.
Bobby, what he's doing is he's taking the four-month figure and breaking that increase over each month, so if I end up having a bill that goes up four dollars total for four months.
Per month. It's a dollar.
He's saying that is a dollar a month of an increase, even though we bill.
Three, three percent, at three percent, my bill goes up one dollar and sixty-five cents.
No, I was talking about one percent. Yeah, so you're going up about forty cents a month.
Right, but who cares about a month we bill in four months?
Right.
No, I know.
But just when, I'm looking at, at the paper that I.
For the, for the average person, using twelve thousand gallons, I think it's about fifteen cents a month, I mean, you know.
That'd be a dollar, that'd be a dollar eighty, right?
Yeah.
That's about what I pay per candy cigarette for my kids to buy the things at the network item store.
So.
And then next year, you know, like I said, at the end of three years, you've gone up thirty-one cents.
Yeah, I, I, my personal opinion is, I think we have a responsibility to bring the, the water rates into parity with our production costs, I, you know.
Right.
Um, like it or not, love it, hate it, whatever.
Chemicals went out.
That's right, and, and we gotta pay, you know, I mean, Josh and, and, and the fellas, they, they, they wanna raise too, and, um.
And they got a truck in Burnley, right?
E- exactly, so.
Oh, now it's fixed, it's all.
It is fixed, yeah.
It's miracle. Um, so, you know, I, I just think.
Wow, is that our magic mechanic?
Yeah, they're happy.
At, at the end of the day, guys, we're running, we're running a business here, right, I mean, it, it may be a municipal corporation, but it's still a business. And I think that we need to, you know, bring our water rates into parity with our production costs, we can't be losing money.
Having that minimum.
And to ask people to pay forty cents a month, to bring us into parity, you know, I mean, that's not a tall hill to climb.
I could probably cover three months right in my change thing in my car.
I think that falls out of my pocket on a daily basis, when I sit down and everything falls all over the floor, I could probably pick that out of my couch cushions right now.
Kevin, you?
Nope, I guess unless you're one of those people, under the five thousand minimum, that's gonna be paying a lot more.
Yes.
But how many, how many?
We're gonna pay thirty bucks, yeah.
How many, how many people though, um, I'm sure there's senior citizens that don't use a lot, a lot. Little municipal though.
You have that, right?
There's a hundred, a hundred and seventy-two, but, Rob, a hundred and seventy-two accounts are.
I have that numbers, I see you have that.
Um, here's what we got, there's twelve hundred ninety-six total accounts, oh, this is not the number.
You're counting everything.
Uh, I don't have it, um, open, give me one second, I'll bring, I'll open that file up.
Of the homeowners, it's, there's nine hundred twenty-seven total accounts, it's a hundred and seventy-two.
That's okay, I, I gotta go.
It was a hundred, it was a hundred and seventy-five residential, and I think two hundred and fifty-six total accounts that went up.
Seventy-two. Yeah. Yeah.
Um, I, I think the other thing is, and I brought this up a few months ago, in the, in the meeting, when Cambridge was looking at just a sewer system. Uh, the cost per month of, of the sewer system in Cambridge was more than we pay for s- water, sewer, bind, garbage, and everything combined, so, you know, I.
Can we give Kevin a minute, cause I do wanna.
Oh, yeah.
Get Kevin's thoughts on this, um, not just the water minimum, and one, the one percent or three percent, but also. Can we give Kevin a minute, cause I do wanna get Kevin's thoughts on this, um not just the water minimum and one, the one percent or three percent, but also the sewer minimum, if we're gonna do that.
I don't care with the sewer minimum, especially for those eighty people that don't even pay anything.
They will be now, that's.
I know they will be, but for those people especially, I'm glad to see that that happening because um there's no incentive for these people to fix up their properties, they're just sitting on them and not paying anything for what.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, that goes hand in hand with this other thing, with the with this thing.
Gotta make sure it's written out as zero to five thousand, right?
It is written out that, we have that, the resolution.
It's. Okay, really?
Okay, so what about if a person is not hooked up?
So. So Kevin, uh i- i- if they don't have a line that runs to their building, like if if they don't have a line off of the main. Is that we, is that, is that your question? Oh, no, they answered.
That was that was my question, what happens if they're if they're not hooked up, not if they don't have a line, because I think every residence in the village has a has.
Not every, there's a couple weird scenarios like that, in in that case, if they don't have access to the main, they are not gonna be charged that.
That's their one, yeah.
That's a li- and they've never had access. Not somebody who just went to their basement and saw it all, right?
Well, village policy is is no, they cut off the service at the at the main and if you, they're not paying, right?
I don't think you can.
Yeah.
No, it has to be us, so if there is a, if we provided a access to the main, then it regardless of if they cut that line off on their property, they're still paying, cause they have access to it.
Well. Well.
But 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 even if we, if they don't pay their bill, if we go out there and shut it off with the valve, my point is there's still an infrastructure that has to be maintained.
Right.
Right.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
You know, just that stupid valve thing, which it breaks apparently all the time, doesn't ever get used, that's, I don't know.
Yep.
We are, we are long that.
Kevin, Kevin's gotta go, let's let's give Kevin a, this time, Kevin.
What's that?
Um so five percent, five cent or or fifteen cent rate is where you would support it for the increase?
Yeah.
Either one?
Oh, one percent.
Okay, and you're good with both the water and the sewer um minimums?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Um the other thing is the parking law study.
Yes.
Uh.
What's your preference again?
The the most expensive one, which is twenty thousand dollars, the Creighton Manning one, for the local, the the third one that I sent you today. That guy's based in Michigan, they don't even have a, they don't even have a local headquarters.
Yes. Okay.
And he'd be flying here to do the study, so he.
Oh gosh.
Doesn't even have any background in the area.
Okay, so this is the one you're asking us to support?
Not good.
I think it's 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 more um.
More better?
Comprehensive, right?
Okay, alright.
I mean, you can vote anyway you want, but I'll vote for that one.
Alright, alright, we'll keep moving on, but if you need to go Kevin, that's fine.
Should we vote on it here or?
What's that?
Should we vote while you're?
Do you want, yeah, we can, we can vote for the parking study right now, just jump to that for a quick moment, if that's alright.
It's a tier deal, so.
Kevin, do you wanna make?
We should, we should be able to vote.
Oh, I have a quick question, are we paying with this through ARPA funds?
Yeah.
That was the plan.
That was the plan, right? Do we have to do anything special about how we allocate the ARPA funds?
I don't think so.
There was, Andy had some, there was some weird, I don't, I don't.
Well, because they made it so broad now.
Oh, that's right, it changed.
That's right, it's changed.
I think a long time ago, Andy stated that uh the par- the parking study was a a use of, a good use of.
Okay.
It is, because it's a part of economic development and it's.
Yes. So it's, it's.
You don't need a motion.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the usage of ARPA funds to pay for the parking study by Creighton Manning Engineering. For a total of nineteen thousand one hundred dollars, Kevin, you wanna make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second by Deb, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions?
You're opposed.
Yeah.
Yes, okay, so it passes, one, two, three, four, five, five to one?
I wasn't sure who said it.
Uh yeah, yeah, alright, thank you, the one thing I will note and um on this is none of the proposals include a included a walkthrough of. A review of kind of the local laws on the books, so that is something that we are gonna have to be prepared to sup- to be able to talk to and supplement. When this stuff comes in, as we've looked over our laws and as we're thinking about modifying parking laws.
But they're also gonna go to the the state regulations to see what they uh they do for for parking, especially on Church Street or whatever.
That's fantastic.
And it's not gonna be some, if we implement it, there's gonna be a lot of people that aren't gonna be happy.
Uh yeah, but it's us enforcing the rules that are already in the books, so I'm not that, yeah.
They'll tow the car anyway.
There are some people, they won't be happy no matter what we do.
They're not happy, right?
If you don't like it, we gotta get it.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not happy anyway.
Alright, 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 thank you Kevin, uh let's go back to uh budget discussion, so it sounds like just to iron out the point.
It's a worry, I don't know, it's a question, you know. It's a no matter what.
Uh we are all in favor of the water um minimum being set and the sewer minimum being set.
Yeah. Yeah.
I am just putting on the record, I'm not in favor of the sewer minimum being set at the same time as the water, I'd rather see the fifteen cent increase in the water.
Okay.
As well as the minimum and no change to the sewer, but I'm I'm fine either way, I just know that budget wise, we're we're lower in water.
I could go with that. I could go with that. I could go with that.
Than sewer, but I don't also don't wanna rock the boat on things that we have here, so.
Didn't we uh, did we talk about sewer rates too?
Sewer rates are a different beast and has to go through a public hearing.
Okay.
The logic of the water is the same as it basically says it would be for sewer, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
To say you're doing it here, but you're not doing there, creates a hypocrisy, if we're trying to say that's the reason why.
I think it will truly confuse people.
Yeah.
If we do one and not the other?
It is what it is this year, but if you do one this year and next year, I can imagine that people are gonna.
Okay, I'm just thinking.
Just do it all.
And people don't necessarily separate things on their bill anyway, they just, it's the bill.
Yeah. I'm I'm just thinking in terms of there's gonna be, I mean, out of the hundred and seventy five residential spots, it's probably more like a hundred to a hundred and twenty that are like legitimate users. As opposed to people who just have a property and aren't doing anything with it, which I'm.
Right, right, there was only.
I have, I don't really care about that, I'm just thinking about people who are maybe single.
Eighty two zeros.
Or just a couple who aren't using it, who are going to get hit, and I'm just afraid with the sewer also being there, it's kind of a double hit.
My mother will be.
I know, your mother, but um but at the same time, I I totally understand the principle, and I think Doug, your your point is right, um that it's weird to do one and not the other.
I know, I talked to Judy.
Kind of speaks against the principle we're trying to enforce.
And I I think that's always kind of been the way, right, water in, water out, kind of built for the same.
Yes, that's always been the same, so.
We don't allow for evaporation, we don't need to charge exactly the same.
So, okay, so I now the last question is, are we thinking the five cent increase in the water rate or the fifteen cent increase in the water rate?
I want fifteen would be my thing.
Okay, I say fifteen.
That's three percent, yeah.
Doug?
I prefer one, I would do three, but no, no commitment to increases in the future. If we do three, I'm not, well, we're planning two and one, I don't wanna be messaging that.
I would commit.
Yeah.
Well, that's another vote, right, next year, so.
Yeah.
And that's gonna depend on what the numbers are next year, um that'll depend on.
That's the B.
Who knows, maybe we'll, maybe the companies will come.
Right, right.
Yeah.
That we don't need to do it, right?
And that is a, and that, well, that is a big unknown, it's out there, right?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
I said, I said, yeah, we don't have to rear budget.
That's a miracle, oh, two seconds.
Miracle's happening.
Well, we can have a three year.
I just, I'm just saying that's what we need now for production purposes.
But you never know, we've been waiting for a long time.
But we can build three year plans.
But we don't have that.
No, we, we're my, well, I'm trying to make one.
I know, but we don't have it in other areas either, so I I just, I I would go three, but not making and doing that, no commitment.
Right, well, that's all, that's all votes. Oh no, you can't do that.
That this is part of a three year increase that's gonna happen, I hate the message.
Okay. So, so.
But we redo that every year, so.
Yeah, it's a year, year budget.
Right.
It comes down to.
Well, this could, it could be something that's just in the back of our minds, we just vote for the three this year, look at it next year, maybe we won't need it, maybe we'll need another three, and maybe we'll need one.
Right, right.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, we're.
Okay.
To Doug's point, we're we're way ahead of ourselves, cause there's so many unknowns.
So you do it all.
Right.
Yeah, three or one.
Yeah. Hopefully, we don't have to do it.
Um I'm actually, I was also in favor of the fifteen cent increase.
Right.
Hopefully, we can go down.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so it'd be Kevin was one and it would be.
And and the position is.
Kevin was interested in one, uh the one percent, five percent, we're all interested in three percent.
And I'm sure.
Right. Like if we, if we go green this year.
Doug is interested in three percent with no raises, act that for a couple years, which I would love to get behind as well, and that would be my goal for next year's budget, is to not do that again, okay?
We don't have to. Oh, we don't have to. Oh, I would, that would be my goal too, but.
So, when the resolution comes up to adopt the budget and the rates, we'll just note for the record that we've we've modified, cause we're originally planned for the five cent increase, we'll do the fifteen cent increase. Um so the last item now that we have all this, and I will go back in and plug in the revenue changes so that you have this, uh for the final budget. Are there any other lines that you guys wanted to talk about?
Just just a minor thing.
Please, that's fine.
Uh my understanding is that the planning and zoning board members are supposed to get twenty five dollars per meeting when they go.
That is something, oh geez, I just dropped a pencil, that is something we started a couple years ago, because I had first off wanted incentive, but also heard that that was kind of a common practice, and I wanted to support them, and so yes, that's.
They don't get that.
They haven't gotten that?
That's my understanding, no.
They have not, no, they never.
And I don't see it in the budget either, so.
They never implemented.
Are they asking for?
I think.
Uh it was raised to me yesterday.
Oh, I mean, that's supposed to be the case, we we we've talked about that, I don't.
Well, it's like, that means.
They ne- they never implemented it, um I think because the boards weren't full.
So they're supposed to make it once a month.
And I don't, so they never put out and.
They don't even do that, yeah, but there's.
But ideally, you wanna, so we wanna budget.
Yeah, you push a lot.
Tax information and all of that type of.
Two hundred, whatever, three hundred bucks.
Okay, so Elena, if we wanted to make this a policy.
None, nothing matters.
Per person, so it would be.
Is the easiest way to do this to to codify it by resolution or build it into the?
Maybe you have to, you have to if you're paying. Do the resolution.
Do it by resolution, okay.
Yeah.
And do we make it retroactive when they were told that they were supposed to get it?
I mean, I would be in support of that, cause I like to, if we say something, I wanna follow.
So. That's twelve hundred bucks.
Yeah, it's, it's not like they've had a whole lot of meetings, so it's not gonna be.
Cause not many.
They might be more often.
No, I'm, no, there are some, they've got some work coming up, that's for sure.
And that first year there were no legitimate meetings because it was COVID.
It was COVID.
And then the next year, I think there were two meetings.
I would have to go back in my emails to figure out when we set that, I feel like that was somewhat recent, probably in the past couple of years.
It was, it was right in the middle with COVID.
May have been, yeah, yeah, so I think it was only a couple of years ago, there was not that many meetings.
It was, and we had, and we had that meetings, the following one, we had, I would say two maybe?
So.
Tell you what, can you look back and and give us the dates and attendance for those meetings, we will price it out and and we can.
You'd have to put twelve hundred in the budget if four members.
Yeah.
I'm I'm.
I thought we had a budget.
Does the zoning board get the same thing?
We're planning and zoning board, so we have that in the budget.
So you.
Zoning board did, yeah, I don't, I don't.
Eighty twenty five.
But but that's twenty four hundred dollars, we gotta find.
Twenty four hundred dollars in there. So.
They would be either board.
In the eighty twenty five point four line, um we have five hundred dollars budget that we haven't used.
Well, neither one, neither one is fixed, so.
Uh.
Neither board is gold, so you don't have to pay it.
Yeah, but you gotta budget for full, and then we don't spend it, we don't spend it.
Right.
So we could certainly decide to budget more, I'm I'm very in support of that, what do you wanna budget that at?
Twenty four hundred. Both boards.
Twenty five a meeting?
Twenty five a meeting, one a month, four people, you know, so it's twelve hundred per board.
Twenty five per person a meeting.
If we don't have one a month, if we have one every four months.
They don't have one a month.
But we've got some stuff coming up and we gotta work.
Should we budget, should we budget for it or no?
We, well, we don't, we're gonna have trainings coming up, because we have things on the radar that we need to move on, so.
Like if you budget twenty four hundred for planning and zoning, I mean, about case.
It's in one pot, it's in one line, so.
Yeah, that's a lot.
I I think that's probably too much, we.
Yeah.
But but what if they do meet once a month, and there is four on each board?
Then it just, then it just comes in a- at the end of the year and the report as it was more than we had budgeted for, so next year we adjust.
And how much is eighteen hundred?
And that's okay, yeah, it's it's not a, it's not a huge deal.
And if it goes over, it goes over.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I was just looking at if it goes under, goes under, I don't know how you do it, I don't know how you do it.
So, um. Okay, so I'm gonna change.
Better, but.
Yeah.
Uh I'm gonna put this in as the eighty one twenty line, and what do you wanna put the number up to Doug?
It's like eighteen hundred.
Eighty eighty twenty five point four. Jeez. We're so close.
Did you do that in your head?
Um she has all these done right, it is crazy, it is crazy, uh what do you wanna move it up to, was five hundred?
She's got a number.
She has, she has.
Can I tell in my head?
Eighteen hundred?
Eighteen hundred, are you guys go with that, I'm go with that, yeah, okay, um.
Hopefully get boards, I mean, hopefully, we can get the people to do it, I asked Colleen Sneakel today, she's not interested in, I'm like, hey, Colleen, what do you think?
That'll be the general.
The best people, there's no interest in that, because.
We have a lot of things.
Planning and zoning.
There's just no, no interest, we gotta pick the right people.
Alright.
I have no idea, I I ask people.
Okay, great, anything else you wanna talk about, Doug had brought up um the police payroll line. Remember when we talked through the police payroll, we had budgeted for the three full time we have now, plus maintaining the, oh, we need to talk the salary. Cause that that salary decision would be something we'd have to do here in in open meetings.
In executive position, right?
Well, we can discuss it specifically in executive, but if we're going to act on say a two percent raise in the police chief pay, we have to do that for the budget. Cause that's where the budget is, and that would be an item that's listed in the salaries, right, the sort of the police chief or OIC. Um so if we need to discuss specifics or personnel related things, we would move into executive, but Elena, if we're just discussing, I agree with the two percent raise, I agree with the three percent raise, we can do that out here, correct? For salary positions.
Can I ask a question before you, I'm sorry?
Sure, sure.
What was the raise that the police officers got, what percentage?
Two.
The police officers?
I believe there's a lot.
In the contract?
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, is are we talking about union members or non-union members?
Well, that's a good point, because technically speaking, the OIC is part of the union.
Everybody. OIC.
The officer in charge.
George.
Are you talking about that position or the actual chief?
Um both, because in the past, the chief was not a member of the union, the chief sat at the table and represented the village in negotiations.
Right.
But in our current situation, the officer in charge is a member of the union.
But as a title, I I just don't understand, I think there's something, isn't there, in our union contract anywhere, it might, it might be state law, that. When you have a union, the chief is entitled to the same benefit, it's the highest paid position in his department.
It all depends on circumstances, cause some places you go and they're under contract, which obviously you can negotiate whatever you want into a contract.
He's not.
Um they have civil service protection, but they don't necessarily, I mean, if you have employee handbook, that sets forth the benefits, which anyway, don't, we're working on, so you're in a little bit.
Right. Yeah. So this is a.
Kind of where Paul is getting it from.
This is a very complicated situation with a lot of layers.
I can look up the exacting, but I believe what you're referencing was an old section of the general municipal law, it was something, section G.
What was that, G mean?
Something like that, and it was either repealed or uh it was overturned by a court, I mean, the only reason I know that is this this attorney out in Dullesville brags about how he got it undone or something. Something like that, is now state Supreme Court justice, but something G that required the payment of the chief to be no less than something. I can look it up, but he was quite clear that it had been repealed, and I just, the scuttlebutt in the office, listening to the guys talking about police stuff that I don't pretend to understand, but. I remember them saying, yeah, you know, back in the day, you had to pay no less than the something, you know, so I don't think that's.
I think it was two oh seven, and I was just brought it up.
I don't think that's a thing.
Because of the fact that if that's true, you don't really even need to discuss it, right, and you don't need to be in executive.
I think that was repealed, right?
So, we will have to spend some time in executive and emails trying to figure out the unique situation we have. And check up against the various laws that are out there regarding the situation. If we later do want to do a raise or feel like, oh shoot, we should have done a raise, after the budget is passed, we just do that through a resolution, include like a budget amendment?
And any budget amendment?
Yeah, I I mean, usually it's like a budget modification resolution and you just, I mean, I do them all the time, it's pretty common.
Okay. Okay. Okay, um but to to answer one of the questions that we had come up, when we budgeted the payroll, the payroll included the three full time officers, which we have had moved to. Um the continued pay for the OIC based off of the previous chief's rate, um all of the part time shifts that we have on average been doing, and we put in another chunk. Of thousands, I think it was like ten or twenty thousand dollars extra, with the anticipation of filling more um.
Yeah. Shifts.
Shifts, now, we we looked at our like, our whole like, what's our dream situation with every single eight hour shift covered every single day of the week, and it was like another hundred thousand dollars more than we could do, but. Um if you know, we have the the chief position posted, if that's something we end up doing, um and we need to increase the chief pay. Um we have some money there to do that, and if we end up deciding that we set up a a higher salary uh for a new chief down the road. Just like we said before, it just means that our budget will come in higher in expenses than we had budgeted for, and we adjust the next year, I don't think it's gonna be like a huge deal if the pa- police payroll ends up being twenty thousand more, cause we hired a chief.
But that doesn't, is there some assumptions there that the full, the officer in charge position, I don't know how many hours, is it, is it, is the police chief over and above it? And everything will stay the same, except that chart position may go down in salary, I know we can't talk about individuals, but it's, if you add another position to what you already have, it's another position, like, yeah, that could be a lot of money.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so the OIC would basic, has a a set salary, which would either be the chief salary or part of the chief salary shouldn't go higher.
Uh.
The OIC, once a chief is hired, would just go back to being part time, hourly, covering the various shifts.
So we have to budget what that amount would be?
Yes, you're talking, are you talking about, are you talking about budgeting the OIC moving to part time or the chief salary?
I'm talking about that the OIC would go to part time, so it's that money, and then when you add a position, it's the difference of that plus what you have.
So in our mind, when we budgeted extra money, it was to cover extra shifts, those extra shifts could include the OIC now becoming a part time and picking up extra shifts with the chief in there.
There is, I will say in the manual, there is a position of deputy chief. If you went down the road.
Interesting.
Hey, hey guys, it's two oh seven M, and uh it basically said, and I believe it's been repealed, but it said, if a sergeant who is the highest ranking supporting police officer to the chief. And he was a member of a negotiating unit, receives a four percent pay increase, and other officers in bargaining it receive a similar four percent increase plus additional amount. The police chief is entitled only to the four percent increase pursuant to general municipal law two oh seven M, and I'll be damned, he was right, he wasn't lying to me, and holding versus. The police chief is entitled only to the four percent increase pursuant to general municipal law two oh seven M, and I'll be damned, he was right, he wasn't lying to me, and Holding versus Murphy versus the village of Dollsville, which is where this attorney was talking to me, said basically, if the chief position is vacant, the raises need not apply. So, the chief came into Dollsville, said, hey, you haven't had a chief in five years, you gave them all four percent increases, therefore the salary went up, you know, twenty percent. And the court held that that was not actually, uh, the court disagreed.
That's interesting.
But I don't know if two oh seven M is even a thing, I'm trying to, may not even be a thing altogether anymore.
Two oh seven C is still in for.
Well, that's disability retirement, that's, that's something, total, that's disability, you know, um, if, uh, why do you need, yeah.
You know, that's just pay what we're, it's repeated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two oh seven M, yeah, okay, so that's.
Alright.
I guess it wasn't planned, you know.
I took care of that, thing, uh, 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 oh, okay, I don't like it, I don't like it.
Okay, um, anything else you got on park budget wise, or you think we're ready to approve the budget? With all the wa- water rate, sewer rate, or water rate and sewer and water minimums?
I'm ready.
I think I'm ready.
I'm ready.
Alright, I have the motion, oh, and we have a resolution, so.
Uh. Wait, can we just, can you uh, help me with the, now I had said, you know, if we went one percent sewer increase, it would get us into the green? Which we.
It would get us, oh, sewer?
Better by like seven hundred and eighty dollars.
Wait, sewer or water?
Sewer.
Sewer is, we're only in, like, in the hole, like, less than a thousand in budget, and we're gonna likely have about eleven thousand five
Seven hundred, yeah, so. So, we just leave that?
Just for the minimum, just setting the minimum, so we can leave that, and we're, we're planning to be in the green, which is good, because landfill lead jades, that's all I can say.
Okay. Yeah, we gotta.
Alright.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, we have this resolution set up, uh, I'm gonna review the whole resolution, it's not very long, and we'll, we will have to, how do we make an adjustment, after we introduce it?
After we introduce it, you get a first, somebody to put it forward, a second, and then a motion to amend, a second on the motion.
Okay.
And then you vote on the motion, and then you go back and vote on the resolution as of now.
Motion. Thank you, okay, so this is a resolution adopting the twenty three twenty four fiscal year budget for the village of Housen Falls, establishing water and sewer usage minimums, and amending the water rates, uh, I'm gonna skip over some of the whereas it talks about, that we filed, the tentative, um, public hearing, we did it, we did, we met when we said we were going to meet, um, preliminary budget amended, okay, so, um.
Now therefore be.
Now therefore be resolved, by the board of trustees, the village of Housen Falls in regular session duly convenes follows, that this village board of trustees does hereby adopt a preliminary budget as amended and revised, a copy of which is attached hereto and made a part of hereof, as the annual budget of the village of Housen Falls for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of June twenty twenty three, and as such budget as adopted be amended in detail into the minimum proceedings of this village board trustees, and be it further resolved that through the budget process, this village, uh, board of trustees does hereby agree to amend the water rates for the village of Housen Falls to set a base water rate of five dollars and fourteen cents, which is a five cent increase, which will be applied to the multiplier applicable with respect to each type of user account to arrive at a new rating, as more fully set forth in the document attached hereto and made a part hereof, I'll show you that as well. Uh, and be it further resolved that through the budget process, this village board of trustees does hereby establish a minimum usage fee for water accounts, and a minimum usage fee for sewer accounts, and that such minimum usage fee will be assessed and applied to any and all accounts utilizing between zero gallons and up to five thousand gallons per billing cycle at the established water and or sewer rate for the particular account, as set forth in the document here, attached hereto and made a part hereof. And be it further resolved that the minimum water and sewer fees established herein may be amended from time to time as necessary by resolution of the village board of trustees. So before we do any edits, we have to have someone offer the resolution and second it?
I'll offer.
Uh, alright, and Doug will second it, alright, so, discussion, um, we had talked about changing this rate from the five dollars and fourteen cents, which was our one percent, to five dollars and twenty four cents, which is the fifteen cent increase, three percent. So, if that's the case, I'm looking for a motion
I'll make it.
to adjust the resolution to read a five dollar and twenty four cent rate. That was uh, Bobby Decker seconded by Dan, any further discussion on that? All in favor of the motion to modify the resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstentions, none, carries unanimously, now, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote please.
Trustee Shetty?
Yay.
Trustee O'Malley left, but he did say yes.
Um, well, he doesn't get a vote regardless, cause he left, but, yeah.
He said no.
He did, so I put him out, so, okay, trustee Alter?
Yep.
Trustee Decker?
Yes.
Trustee Sauer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ryan is absent, and Mayor Allen.
Uh, yes.
And it passes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for all of the work on that.
I think that's a good idea, we should. With the rate change, I remember this.
Alright.
Only apply the minimum, I guess, same, same, right, that one, so.
Um, so, uh, unfortunately, I'm looking for a motion to accept the uh, I'm looking for a motion to accept the resignation and retirement of Marie O'Neill, which will be effective May thirty first of twenty twenty three. Sadly, um, and, and before I take the motion, um, Marie had to step into a situation where we had had the one for a long time in Born, so I'm gonna start tearing up again, I can't do that, um, and you had big shoes to fill, and you hit the ground running, and kept up with all of my craziness, and all of our craziness, so, um, we are grateful for you stepping in at that time, and your work, and we're very sad to see you go, and also very excited for what you have next. Um, so I'm looking to make it official, looking for a motion to accept the resignation and retirement of Marie O'Neill effective May thirty first.
Only if she stays and gets somebody trained to do the job.
Well, that's on us to get somebody there soon, so, thank you Doug, you second?
I'll move. I'll second, yeah, I'll second.
Alright, any further discussion, or wonderful things you wanna throw Marie's way?
Enjoy retirement.
Where are you going, Marie?
Thank you. Um, well, here, and my son's in Maine, back and forth.
Where, oh, where in Maine?
Bitford, Bitford.
Saco, Bitford, Old Orchard Beach.
Yeah, Saco and Bitford, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Ireland, you know, wherever my suitcase will take.
There you go, there you go, alright, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstentions, carries sadly unanimously, we've done the parking study, do you guys have anything else before moving to executive session?
You skipped a few things.
Uh, I did not mean to.
Only skipped the move aside, you're right.
We did all the budget stuff, so all the budget stuff is done.
The electric, electric panel?
Yeah, got ARPA funds for the electric panel.
Oh. Um, oh, geez, I forgot to mention this, shoot, 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 you're right.
That one, we have no choice, as far as I'm concerned, but.
Um. So, we had talked about the possibility of, of using the fifty thousand for ARPA, I had meant to remove that from the budget entirely, so that it shows us fifty thousand dollars less of an expense, because we know we're going to use it for ARPA funds.
Right.
So, what's that?
You can do. You just do it on your spreadsheet, and it sounds fine.
Do I have to make an official motion to budget modification to remove the money from the budget?
I would say if everybody's in agreement, since it's all part of the same night.
Okay, so, um, so the thought was, we had the forty nine thousand and change built into the budget, I would like to simply remove that from the budget, knowing that we're gonna use ARPA funds to do that? Are you guys good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ok- okay, do we need to make an official motion to approve the usage of fifty thousand dollars of ARPA funds for this infrastructure repair?
I think so, I think so.
We have on all the other ARPA.
That's what I thought, so, thank you Doug, thank you, um, Bobby, further discussion on that?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstentions?
Jimmy gonna be ecstatic.
Carries, thank you, um, make sure I do that before, before we go, thank you Doug, um, anything else? We've done, um, anything else that you guys wanna bring up?
You forgot the move aside, I was.
Uh, we don't do that in every meeting, just the regular meeting, that's, I actually took that out, oh, I did, I did have to take it out, shoot.
I just had a point, I, I, she's definitely forgot things, I just.
Darn it.
You got.
Looking for a motion to enter executive session for the purpose, or to discuss personnel matters, no business to me, I didn't.
Make it, Deb, make it.
Make it.
Deb, Deb made it.
Deb, second, Dan on favor, I oppose or abstentions, alright, we're officially moving into executive session at seven oh one P M.
Alright.
Thank you all very much.